Okay, welcome to this hearing, a video hearing of the Public Accounts Committee, interviewing the Chief Executive and his team about the annual accounts. These will be under the same rules as in personal hearings. The usual opening statement, Chief Executive, so it's in the chat column if you want to remind yourself of it. And we've got lots, thank you, we've got lots to get through and we've got limited time. So please can you all keep your answers succinct? And now if we do the introduction for transcribers and viewers. I'm Sarah Ferguson, Chairman of the Public Accounts Committee. My Vice Chairman is
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. John Labaye, Constable Larry, Vice Chairman, thank you.
We're the Deputy of St Peter.
Yes, Deputy of St Peters. Hello.
Thank you, Inna.
Deputy Inna Gardiner, Saint Helles Reinphone, Member of Pasing.
Super, and Adrian. Adrian Lane.
Adrian Lane, Independent Member.
Thank you, Moz.
Moz Scott, I'm an independent member too, sorry you can't see me.
Tim.
Hello there, my name is Tim Rogers, I'm also an independent member.
Right, Chief Executive.
Chief Executive Charlie Parker.
And if you can introduce the rest of your team.
I have in the room with me appropriately socially distanced away, the Treasurer, Richard Belt.
Hello.
We also have online Peter Stiles, Peven Hemmings, and Mike Thomas and Alison Rogers.
Right, okay, let's go then. The accounts are titled Government of Jersey, why?
Peter Stiles, question for you, Chairman.
Sure. So Chairman, the the accounts are the States of Jersey accounts. And they are, they're referenced States of Jersey throughout and in the introductions, I think there has been some confusion to some extent around the distinction with States of Jersey and Government of Jersey when they're colloquially referred to. But they can confirm they are States of Jersey accounts as referenced on the websites and reports in the States Assembly. There has, in acknowledgement of the difference between the States of Jersey and Government of Jersey, there is on page one of the accounts, reference to that in the scope of the annual reporting accounts. And so it does make reference to the distinction between the two and where reference is given to both of those throughout the documents. And to try and give some clarity to the end user, I think inherently with the different, the legal nuances between the two. It's accepted that some readers may may conflate the two, but we've tried to clarify that from that scope in on page one.
Okay, fine. Now, Chief Executive, what legacy issues do you believe government has got to grips with and resolved, as stated in the accounts?
So there are a number of areas where I think over the last year we've made progress around some of the investment decisions of the past or operational improvements that we have had to make. For example, we've had significant underinvestment by the government in IT, which has resulted in a whole host of challenges that have faced the organisation. We have, over the last few years, under-invested in our people, which again, the government plan sought to address that problem around lack of financing, developing our own workforce, being able to look at how we could invest in cultural change and also support staff through some of the changes that we are making as a public service. We've had a long-term problem about the recruitment of social workers, which has resulted in there being, over the last year, some real changes in the way in which we've addressed that deficit, which I think has seen a significant improvement in the number of people who have been able to be appointed on a permanent basis to what had previously been an area where predominantly we had had a huge number of people that had been either interim or temporary and you didn't get the consistency across for service users. And we've done a significant amount about consolidating a lot of our customer services into one place, which again tended to be rather disparate and there wasn't the coherence around some of the approaches to the way in which we dealt with individual accessing of government services by islanders. The other area where I think we've done quite a lot of work in the last period that the annual report covers is in the Treasury and Exchequer Service and Department, which has seen a significant investment. And moving forward has helped us to improve our reporting, our end-of-year accounts, the work that we've been doing to drive improvements in revenue Jersey and also work that we have been doing to improve the connectivity with IT IT systems that will underpin both the treasury function, payroll, our people services and HR systems and procurement. So these are, I think, some of the areas over the period of the annual report, which we have started to address, we have secured investment for and we are making progress on.
Super, thank you very much. And was the decision not to reference the uncertainty created by COVID-19 until late in the document a conscious one? And if so, why?
Richard Bell's going to pick that up, okay.
You say late in the document, in terms of being late in the document, we put that up as a risk. Most appropriately where most of the risks are considered as opposed to separately. Prominence is given to COVID-19 as the first risk stated in the key risk section. And references made to it being after the events or an event after the reporting period disclosure. Perhaps worthwhile just recapping on the timeline, at the time we first did drafts of this set of accounts, COVID-19 was nowhere near the issue and risk that it is now or was at the point to which we concluded the accounts.
But I'm happy to Thank you very much. Sorry, I hate to cut you off, but you've answered the question and as I say, we've got quite a lot to get through. Now, Deloitte has requested additional fees, why and how much?
I think Peter, you're going to pick that up?
Sure, yes. So Chairman, we're still in conversation with Deloitte about the about the fees, so we are moving close to agreement, but that is still under consideration, so that can be discussed further as that number is confirmed. It is less than was previously charged by PWC in the previous year. So in terms of the the driver, key drivers for the increase in fee or sorry, the fee, additional fee this year, one of the key factors was the change in accounting policy for income tax. So that was a substantial piece of work irrespective of Deloitte being new auditors. So them being new added a new dimension, another dimension to that as well. So they, a large proportion of the additional fees in respect to the work that they had to do to validate the numbers involved in the income tax estimates. There was also the work done on the change in working practice, I suppose, for us and them as new auditors. So as a complex organisation, we've done a lot of work to raise the standards and process. They were, it was their first year audit, so combined with that, they've they've had to do some you know, additional work to to get underneath of that, those things.
Yes, but from the comments I had, it sounded as if they were being not blamed, but held responsible for the extra fees because they were new and had to do extra work, but surely there should be a balance, it's a joint responsibility because they had nothing from the previous year to compare it with because a lot of things had changed. So, you know, perhaps it's, as I say, surely negotiation on the fees is a matter of joint responsibility.
It absolutely is Chairman, there's no, there is no blame in terms of pointing at Deloitte and saying there is an issue there, it's purely the nature of the work being both the first year audit and on our side to the change in processes and increasingly the change in accounting to progress forward. And I think Deloitte have acknowledged that it was it was definitely the right thing to do to change the accounting policy. That just coincided with the first year audit with Deloitte, so it did mean that they were coming in both fresh and we have changed an accounting policy.
Super, thank you very much. Now, we will move over to questions on capital expenditure and investments from the Deputy of St Peters.
Yes, thank you, I refer to page 100, was the capital expenditure within budget and is it on track to deliver? And what are the additional risks associated with it?
So I think Alison Rogers and Richard Bell are going to pick this up, Chairman.
Fine.
Hello Chair, so I would say of course that
Would you like to put your video on Alison?
That better, is that working?
Yes, it just helps everybody, because it is a public hearing.
Sure. The question around whether capital expenditure was within budget, obviously by by law it has to be. There are occasions, but not within the page referred to, but there are instances where a project may need extra expenditure, which of course would go through a process of assessment. In on page 100, which is the page referred to, then all capital was within budget. You'll know that in 2020, this is the first year that we're going to be doing capital on a cash flow basis. So this is going to be a change for us, it's how we are going to be planning for our capital. But you will still see the actual expenditure going through the accounts on an individual year-by-year basis. In terms of risks, there are risks obviously in the current environment. It's a difficult time with lockdown for things to progress as you might wanted them to. But I'm sure you'll be aware that there have been some progress made in terms of ensuring that construction industry can keep going where it is important that it does.
And if we go to page 217, there are significant level of contractual capital commitments at the end of 2019, which presumably you cannot withdraw from. However, are you revisiting these commitments?
Yes, as you say, there are large commitments at the end of 2019 and those are on a contractual basis. That will include some large projects such as the storage treatment works, where the contract will be for a significant amount of work and will extend beyond 2020. So there is the possibility now that we are accounting or we are planning on a cash basis to release some of that money in 2020 if we need to use it for other fiscal stimulus, so long as we replace that funding for that department in future years.
So are you potentially reprioritising some of the projects?
We we should keep all options open, absolutely.
And what's been the impact on COVID-19 on the valuation of assets on the balance sheet, including with mentioned here, social housing, strategic investment and financial assets?
I'm going to take that one Chair. It will be too early to say what the long-lasting or enduring impact would be on the valuation on the balance sheet. Our external valuers are still running through what the impacts will be themselves and do not know yet, but will advise us as we go through them. But if I can just pick up two or three of the specific areas. States of Jersey Social Housing or through Andium Homes, that's valued on a rental value basis and clearly is underpinned by the income support system. It is on the longer term basis of 90% of market values for equivalent properties. The longer we see some dislocation in that market, we may see some change in valuations. Largely as rent is underpinned through income support, we don't expect that to drop off in the meantime. With regards to strategic investments, i.e. the governmental states-owned entities, they are largely doing trading fairly well, we're in regular dialogue with them. The one acceptance to that is obviously ports of Jersey through the airport in particular. So we'll have to pick that up further into the year as when we understand the extent to which the air links will be impacted for the medium to longer term. On the investment portfolio, obviously they took quite a hit as we saw across the globe in terms of investments dropping. But we, the estimate between the end of year and the 31st of March was about 13% drop-off, which was a lot less than you have seen on certain markets. And indeed during April, we've seen up to an 8% is our estimate recovery. Obviously, that's an early indication of where markets are and we won't know until that levels off to a more sustainable or more a basis over the longer term, shall we say. You're on mute Chair, I think.
Chair, you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself. If we can transfer to zero-based budgeting and Adrian Lane.
Good afternoon, I'd like to ask some questions on the zero-based budgeting. The last time you spoke to us, I think it was November. Last time we spoke to us in November about zero-based budgeting, you responded and talked about it as a project. Can you just confirm whether you see zero-based budgeting itself as a one-off project? Or is it the development of the capability that you're running with the project?
So I'll take the lead here, we lost you halfway through that Adrian, but I think I know what the question was. We don't, we see it in a project to the extent that it's a project that we need to implement and then get into a BAU way of working for Treasury. So the, as I say, the project at this point is the implementation and getting it up and running. So we do regard it as a project in that regard, but we do see it as a long-term development for the way in which we set about our budgeting in Government of Jersey.
And how will you take insights from the current process of redeploying budgets on COVID-19 to actually support your assessment of what departments really need to spend going forward?
So we had to be just because of the way we were running it previously and the fact that we couldn't have people in the office and obviously people have been diverted onto the urgent areas regarding COVID-19 response. We've had to pause the project for a while. However, in the last couple of weeks, we've formed the view that we need to kick this one off again. It is, in our belief, fertile ground at the moment in terms of using ZBB and using the way that people have changed the way that they work, reconsidered what a priority is within their budget. We see that it's a useful tool that we could use to inform, opening up ways of thinking about what we need to do, what and how we need to do it and how much it might cost. Equally, there is very highly likely to be a fiscal challenge going forward, which will open up minds to consider things that perhaps in the past will have been seen as a sacred cow. So we see it as a key way by which we can budget across the States of Jersey and Government of Jersey going forward.
Okay, and why have we slipped 18 months from the date we originally thought it was going to happen?
We did talk about ZBB a while back, but prioritised other parts of finance transformation. However, we did highlight, or the Chief Minister in particular highlighted, that he wanted to see this up and running for 2020. So we have put it up and running. As I say, we'd started early January, Treasury was to be the first department alive. We were partway through that when the team, for understandable reasons, had to leave the island and return back to the UK. That was going to make it increasingly difficult in those early days of the outbreak to make good productive progress. So we put it on pause for a while, but it will now, in the coming weeks, begin at pace.
And that will be in time for this year's budget round?
Sorry, I missed that.
Does that be in time for this year's budget?
Yeah, but it would get all the way through all departments, but it will inform us across some of those departments, we'll have to recast the plan over the year.
Okay, so you're obviously in the process of redeploying budgets at the moment as part of your COVID-19 response. Without having done zero-based budgeting, how do you know which expenditure is damaging to cut or which is just deferred to a future period?
Well, the way that we're doing this current initiative of fault, defer, reduce expenditure in 2020 and the way that you do zero-based budgeting, reduces the risk of doing so because you're using the people who are in the departments who know what will damage their services on an ongoing basis and what can be removed from budgets without damaging those budgets on an ongoing basis. Much of the exercise we're currently doing is a natural progression or an actual consequence of being in lockdown, not being able to recruit quite as easily, much of the capital programme, not being able to progress for obvious reasons. So we don't see that there's a high risk at the moment of those steps we take in this interim phase as having a long-lasting damaging impact.
The other bit of the situation though is that there will be potentially a need to change some of the way in which the Council of Ministers' original CSP policies are viewed in the light of the post-COVID position. So we are not proposing any changes to the principles behind the government plan, but the emphasis might be slightly different. So by way of example, economic recovery might be a priority in comparison to other aspects of what previously was seen as being part of the Council of Ministers' first wave of investment decisions going forward. That might see some shift in emphasis. So I guess the other thing is, in this period, we'll be looking at expenditure and understanding where we're going to perhaps redirect some of it for whatever is deemed by the Council of Ministers as their immediate priority as a government.
Thank you. And looking at the wider finance transformation programme, to what extent are the delivery dates for that at risk?
So there's been naturally been some slippage. A key, a major component of finance transformation going forward will be the integrated technology solution. We've had to, just as it falls from the natural consequence of lockdown, slip that slightly towards the back end of this year in terms of the procurement process. But we are trying to lay out plans that will hopefully catch time back up further down the line. Some of the other elements, so the training modules, some of those have been put together reliant upon face-to-face. And we will and are already reconsidering how we do these as we go through a more protracted period of people not being in the office, but people have got to grips with on the on the whole anyhow, with the use of their technology through teams and we're seeing meetings taking place across Treasury, picking up on elements of that. I had an email last week asking me if I do a video as part of the T and E induction and we're, and that's just one small example of showing us, showing you how we're changing our approach. Some other areas, for example, risk management, the embedding of that will slip slightly, but that's because we've had to deploy resources and people use for risk management into those high-risk areas of COVID-19 and have them embedded in some of those groups. But governance remains in place, we're still having programme management meetings at the at the governance level for Treasury and Exchequer for my senior leadership team. As I said, we're reintroducing ZBB further down the line. It's fair to say, I think, that you've seen some of the benefit. Our finance transformation progress to date meant that we're in better shape to appraise lots of business cases that people are putting together and indeed advise them on putting those business cases together, so we've certainly seen some benefit from having done that, even if it won't be perfect afterwards, I'm sure. But I see now through the initial phase that we're picking up lots of that transformation work going forward.
So we should understand from what you've just said that you will have made a decision on your future finance system provider by the end of the year still?
Yep, yep. Just so that members of the committee are aware, whilst clearly the government has been focusing on the crisis created by the pandemic, we have been also proceeding with a number of BAU items which are deemed to be important and potentially are also going to be critical, both organisationally and potentially economically. So the the public service is not just completely and all consumed by the crisis, albeit that large parts of the workforce are focusing on it. So we have people that we've separated out. We've been doing work on a range of big-ticket projects, the hospital is a good example about that. And the technology progress is another one because if there's one thing that the crisis has shown is that the problems that we've talked about about technology, whilst colleagues have done a sterling job in getting and keeping us live, it has not been without huge amounts of work which showed the paucity of our systems and processes that we've been talking about for some time in reality, being very much a risk for us. So we have created aspects of people's work, which is just focusing on BAU because we know that we'll come through the crisis at some point and we need to be able to continue the work that is a priority for the government, particularly around some of the base infrastructure, whether it's systems, whether it's about people or whatever.
Okay, but thanks for the pleasure, Chief Executive, Chairman.
Right, if we can move to Inna Gardner, the question on income tax policy.
Thank you Chairman. In 2019, income tax policy was changed to recognise the income tax in the year in which the underlying income tax was earned, not the year the tax return was paid. I would like to bring your attention to page 233, where the account shows over 350 million of accrued income tax recognised, but not received as well as an additional 114 million's income tax receivable not collected. So my first question, and it's connecting to the risks, is there is a risk to recovering that money? If so, what percentage?
So I think Peter and Richard are going to deal with this.
Would you like me to go first, Richard?
Yeah, I can do.
Just in terms of the income, the recognition, I think as I referred to earlier, that was a a decision that's been backed by the auditors, Deloitte, so it was absolutely the right thing to do from an accounting perspective. And in itself doesn't pose a risk by recognising the the tax in that way. There is obviously always a risk with any debt. There is obviously always a risk with any debt to recovery. And particularly in light of the COVID impact on employment and earnings, that risk could be perceived to be greater. I think at this stage, it's too early to understand what the percentage impact is likely to be. But what we can say is that the sectors or market sectors that are worst affected or most affected currently are not necessarily where our greatest proportion of income comes from. So there is an inherent stabilizer in that respect from an income tax perspective. And there is, it's also worth noting that the payroll co-funding scheme has been supporting those sectors that are worst impacted. And in itself, that allows income to still flow through the system, if you like, and support the income tax payments on the back of that.
I would like to take it a bit further. I accept that as a counting point of view, it should be done this way. If I'm going purely to the money and if you were compared to the year previous year, what percentage hasn't been recovered? So what percent generally average hasn't been recovered for the taxes paid, should be receivable, sorry?
So at this point, that's quite difficult to say what will happen for the rest of the year.
I'm not asking the rest of the year. If we are going to 2018, what the amount, percentage of expected tax hasn't been collected? Can we compare what the risk process was put in place regarding COVID-19, regardless of?
So regardless of COVID-19, the figures up to March were holding up broadly similar to the figures for March for the period, for previous periods. So when you think about how recently COVID-19 has started to have an impact, but when you also consider, as Pete has picked up there, that lots of those sectors and in particular financial services wasn't seeing any early signs of impact from COVID-19. And as far as we are currently aware, hasn't. So it's broadly stayed as it was for previous years for the first three months. We're just, obviously, in the early days of finalizing the position for April and will know more as we go through it. But when we were looking at modeling, and I think just to emphasize again what Pete said, when you look at where the tax flows from, it does not flow from those sectors mostly impacted with from COVID-19 from date, be it in the shape of corporate taxation, albeit in the arising from personal taxation. We have done some modeling and we've used that when we've been putting together the business case for borrowing, which we've taken through now. But the points that Pete made around financial services, around government employees still being paid and their paying their ITIS applies. Towards the end of this year, we'll find ourselves knowing more, but also towards the end of this year, we'll find ourselves in the situation that we were before ITIS was introduced. I.e. people will receive tax bills at the end of the year. Those amounts would still be due and we will get into considering over what time period they are paid off. But as things stand, those taxes will still fall due and it will all be about whatever policy we have in shape at the end of the year has to, how long people have to pay that tax that is due and was on 2019's earnings, not 2020 earnings, was due from then.
It would be very helpful for me, I mean, I'm not coming from an accounting background. What I try to understand, how much money from income tax hasn't been recovered for previous year? And how much from, and in this case, how much from 114 million might be not recovered, might be not received, collected for this year? If we are taking everything out, if we are taking COVID-19 out, simple answer, how much hasn't been recovered in previous year and will never be recovered, how much can be lost?
So Pete, do you want to talk about the receivable versus the accrual?
Yes, so in terms of the debt, if you ignore the change in accounting treatment, if you like, which is just an accounting entry to recognize that extra year. So if you think about the cash versus the tax bill, which I think is what you were talking about, but please correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm talking about the cash that gets in and all.
Yeah, so I haven't actually got the exact numbers to hand, but we can always come back with that to confirm the precise numbers we're looking at. But if you look at the debtor in the accounts and consider that, at least in the year prior to, so 2018 and 2019, if you strip out that accounting entry for the accrued income tax for the change in policy, the level of debtor remains fairly stable. And what that indicates is that the cash being paid is going through. We're not facing an ever-increasing level of debt that's going up where people aren't paying their tax bills. So there is an element where the tax debt is being, you know, is constantly being monitored, followed up and closed down. There will always be an element of debt that isn't recovered. And that's the number that I can come back and we can report back to you and confirm what that percentage exactly is. I haven't got that to hand currently.
Okay, thank you, and we'll move forward. And the last question, is there is a risk in recognizing the income before collecting the cash?
I think just, sorry, just to pick that one up again. So I think I probably touched on this slightly in the first part of the question, but there is, to some extent, an inherent risk, as we've said, with any debt. But this in itself as an accounting treatment is no riskier than any other accounting estimates. If you like, accounts everywhere use estimates for both income and expenditure as a normal course of business, if you like. So this is purely using an estimate of income rather than waiting for the final assessments. And it's something that we've cleared through our external auditors, they support it. And it's a move which aligns ourselves with common practice in an accounting sense. And so that, by itself, does not increase the risk. The risk is on the recoverability, which, as we've covered in the first part, is down to the impact on the economy and earnings more widely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right, now if we, if we can turn to Moz Scott and risk management.
Yes. At the time the accounts were produced, COVID-19 was identified as one of a number of risks. Have any other risks surfaced that you would regard as key now that aren't mentioned in the accounts?
Yes. Mike, are you going to, yeah?
I will do, yes. I'll pick that one, apologies, the camera on my laptop isn't functional, so you won't be able to see me give the response. So yes, there are a wide range of risks that have been picked up since the accounts were produced. As the Treasurer said, the timing, we put a sort of risk in there that has impacted probably all aspects of our life one way or another. And as I say, risks at a strategic, operational and tactical level, which have been captured through the SharePoint site we use with the Departmental Risk Champions and through the wider coordination groups. I mean, in terms of headlines, so a risk was identified around the potential failure for the operations in health and what that could, that would mean for the island if the health service was overwhelmed. And there were responses put in place around that. There's been risks identified about safeguarding for vulnerable adults and children due to different ways of working. Some quite logistical ones around national infrastructure. If there was failure, some of that, what would that mean for the island? Some of the risks that have already been mentioned around sort of capital projects, but most importantly, a failure to respond to the potential economic downturn and what our strategy and response to that would be. The chief execs already referenced some of the risks around business as usual, and particularly making projects have been re-prioritized or prioritized and have continued to move forward, even though the crisis has been managed. Probably one of the big ones is, from a financial aspect, is making sure we have enough cash flow and liquidity in place to match the, what put in place around the economy. And then there have been a general heightened awareness around risks of fraud, data security and cyber threats. And then there's probably a sort of much broader one around communication to the island and making sure people, we get that right because people need to know what the messages are and how they need to respond.
Yes, that sounds, it seems to be a plan. How, because it was not something that was being moving people.
Can you speak into the phone, Moz? You're very difficult to hear.
Okay, is this better?
Yeah.
It's better? You've mentioned that you've been moving people off the risk management project, as it were, into various departments. How are you evaluating the various risks holistically? And how will this reflect in allocating government resourcing? So I'm thinking about things like weighting and scoring and construction of mitigating actions. So to repeat my question again, how are you evaluating the various risks holistically? And how will this reflect in allocating government resourcing?
So in terms of the way we evaluate, there is a risk management guidance document that we've been used to underpin that, which is we use a sort of standard impact and likelihood and some of those factors that are in there are financial, some are reputational. And we score on that basis. So it's a sort of five-by-five grid that comes out with a sort of, if the score is above sort of fifteen, then it becomes higher priority for senior management to review and respond to. And those higher priorities would be the ones on the basis of the senior management would need to take a decision on what then to allocate resources to dependents on the risk identified.
And then how, presumably you get different departments saying, well, okay, we reckon, you know, this is risky, this is a substantial risk enough to refer to higher management. How do they evaluate these different risks? How do they weight them against each other in terms of balance of the amount of working out how to mitigate and if to mitigate?
So that would go through, well, there's two funnels for that. One is through the Departmental Risk Group, which has got senior Departmental Risk Champion leads on who flow then a set of risks into the executive leadership team. And it's for the executive leadership team then to determine based on the risks that are presenting and the options as to which way to allocate resources or move the resources around to respond to those risks.
So how are those presented? So for example, if I'm saying, right, okay, health department has calculated a health risk of, say, you know, given it a factor of nine, and yet the economic department has given one, you know, similar of nine or eight, how do they actually decide to actually holistically, you know, weigh these against each other to construct mitigating action? I mean, is there further scoring? How does that actually happen?
Yes, there is further scoring. So there would be initial identification and evaluation based on what controls are in place. And then there will be some planned mitigation actions to reduce the risk. And they could be, you know, so for example, through the sort of COVID process, you know, the modeling in health was suggesting a peak in the middle of May and therefore decisions were taken to how would we best respond to that? And therefore funds allocated as part of a sort of financial plan to respond to that, such as, you know, the building of the field hospital as one mitigation action should have, should the peak have arisen and been higher than the hospital could cope with, for instance.
So if I could just follow on from Mike. So in the current crisis, by way of example, we have had to do a number of balancing between the different risks. So watching the way in which the crisis has moved, inevitably, at one stage, health and the humanitarian component was the biggest single issue. But actually, we probably spent more money in pure terms on the economic impact of the crisis on the island's overarching economy. But we didn't, we didn't look at it from a fiscal point of view. It's about what are the requirements for us to mitigate the risks that affect society as a whole and the island and individual islanders within that as much as by theme. So departments in some of those particular areas would have taken a lead role, would have been responsible for managing and delivering a program to help mitigate against the risks that would have been looked at in the context of Mike's previous answer. But it's not as simple as to say that it's one bidding against another. It's more about us managing the waves of the different components of the pandemic. And as a consequence of that, we will do things that meet those needs as and when. So by way of example, if we find that the health component gets to become more significant again, there would be a focus and an emphasis on making sure that we had mitigated as many of the risks as possible, whatever they may be, whether it's about number of beds, equipment, whether it's about human resources. So by way of example, we have backfilled into HCS huge numbers of people to help to ensure that we can take other people through new training programs. We have got people from different parts of the organization that have been targeted towards other components of what I would call as the monitoring of the health impact. So contact tracing, by way of example. Some of that will be about investment, some of that will be about human resources and some of that will be short versus much longer-term decision-making. So it's fairly fluid, takes account of the risk register, but it doesn't work just purely on a departmental funding basis.
Thank you very much. Out of interest then, if you're looking at the risk of not having or having a Nightingale Hospital, when you're assessing the risk, why would you not be consulting with the clinicians on this?
Well, we did. And in fact, the drive behind a lot of the decision-making has come from direct conversations with the medical teams at the forefront. So we have a scientific and technical advisory cell, which is chaired by the Director of Health and includes within it colleagues who are involved in testing, clinicians at the forefront of ICU, as well as colleagues from senior management teams of health and public health.
Well, thank you, that's useful. I wonder if we could possibly have access to the minutes of the advisory cell meetings, please?
And I would like to.
I think we need to move on, I'm afraid.
Okay.
If we can go on to the use of interims and consultants from Connetab Labai.
Yes, hello. What's the long-term target for the proportion of resources to be acquired from outside the organization? This is regarding interims and consultants.
So we've not really sort of set a target for the proportion of resources that are spent on external resources, albeit we have made it clear that we want to see a reduction in the use and number of external advisors as we go through the implementation of the government plan. But we will always need resources from outside the organization to respond to short-term needs and also to sometimes deal with fixed-term contracts where we don't have either the capacity or the capability on islands. And it might be better, cheaper and more appropriate to take people into different sort of. different sort of categories, whether that's interims, Conetab, whether that's contractors, which sometimes are not permanent, but you need to bring someone in, whether that's agency temps, you know, we use that for teaching and for nursing and also locums, et cetera. So there isn't, there isn't a sort of one size fits all approach, albeit that we do have some quite important principles about trying to get as much of our resources from on island. However, it's also worth just pointing out to the committee that over the last 12 months, we've been doing a piece of work around our procurement frameworks. And in particular, looking at the way in which the procurement of spend on the island is shaped. Because I think there is a bit of a myth that the majority of the money goes off island. In fact, the amount of money we spend on consultants and interims in real terms is relatively small. And you will have seen in the last report that came back, the figure is circa something in the region of 10 to 13 million out of an external spend of something in the region of over half a billion. And if you look at our spend over the last period in 2018, at the top 100 suppliers, 75% of our spend is on island, out of a rough estimate of 423 million every year. And that equates to something in the last couple of years of around 313 million pounds was spent in Jersey rather than spent externally. So I do think that's quite an important factor in recognising aid proportionality issue and also the amount of money that goes off island. And the biggest area that goes off island for us is in the NHS and pharmaceuticals, which clearly we as an island don't produce large amounts of pharmaceuticals. And we also have to deal with significant off-island placements from a health perspective. So we do recognise that we have probably in the first period of the changes that we introduced to help modernise public services, spent more on interims than one would have liked in comparison to previous periods. But in real terms, it was relatively small amount. And of course, the organisation regularly used to spend somewhere around eight to 12% of the workforce budget around interims and consultants, fixed term contracts and/or agency and temp staff. So it's, I think, something that we will see reduced, but we will still need where appropriate to ensure that we get the best value for the public pounds. And also where we will have some very specialist skills that we will need. And there's no point in suggesting that we'll have all of that homegrown on Jersey.
Thank you very much. And as you will have gathered, the auditor general is also going to be looking at procurement. So we shall look forward to, you know, discussing it with you at a later time in the season. Now, I wonder if we can move over to Tim Rogers and talk about performance.
Good afternoon. Who owns the data in the performance report now that you no longer sign it off? I believe it has been removed from the, or the requirement to sign it has been removed from the Jersey Financial Reporting Manual. So curious as to the ownership and accountability.
So just firstly, Tim, to cover off why we removed it from the JFM document. The JFM document is about the accounts and reflected the fact that previously, if we go back three years ago, any commentary in the accounts was largely around financial commentary. It wasn't how well the organisation had been doing in terms of delivering improvements for islanders. So we took out the JFM. It was no longer strictly relevant to the financial numbers. And in actual fact, as I guess your question is heading to, I couldn't actually sign off on those as treasurer as much of that performance data doesn't originate within the treasury or within the financial systems. Those service level indicators are earned by individual director generals. They're accountable for those statistics as they come out. But also, as I've just touched on, where statistics, lots of them come actually through the independent statistics Jersey operation. So they're either generated by the independent statistics unit or they are earned by the relevant director generals for the departments.
Thank you. May I ask, how has the governance around key performance indicators, because you just mentioned key performance? How has the governance been developed, given that this isn't, as you rightly say, exclusively a rotary financial control issue?
So if we go back two years, when we started using more of the performance statistics within the report, the DG on the project set about putting in place an assurance framework. And if you like, a sign off process by which those indicators were recorded and therefore reported so that we could see full accountability through to the officers concerned with putting those numbers together. We have the opportunity or the option to audit them as we go forward. But it's also worthwhile mentioning that we have the development of a consistent method of reporting planned through the JD Performance Framework, which will see statistics and key performance indicators reported on a much more real time basis, on a regular basis throughout the year.
Okay, that's very helpful. Could you just expand very briefly as a supplementary, when you feel those, because you said there'll be more reporting and more almost real time. When do you anticipate that becoming available? What sort of timeframe?
So the, the level of reporting has already improved significantly. The expectation was that we would have had the majority of this through, being developed throughout 2020. And certainly the expectation would have been later on this year, we would have been able to see that. I have to say that some of the work that those colleagues have been involved in developing that, those personnel have been involved in a huge amount of other work in the current crisis. So by way of example, they're doing a lot about the reporting of data and the monitoring of testing and all the work that's associated with that at the moment. So I'd have to come back and look at what the revised timelines are for taking that forward. So there will be some slippage, but I do expect the work to continue. And I know that some of the team are still being deployed on that. And I don't expect it to be lost in 2020, but I couldn't give you an assurance at the moment of exactly when.
I think under the current circumstances, that's entirely acceptable. And we'll look forward to an update in due course.
I mean, I think just on that, just, sorry, just to, and I apologise for cutting across you, Tim. But just, just on that, there was, there was some work just literally just before the crisis came, which was some demonstration work that was presented to the council of ministers around reporting. And whilst I think it's very much in its infancy, at the appropriate time, once we've come through this particular phase, I'd be very happy at some point, Chairman, to come back to the committee with potentially some further demonstration. But I'd go back and just look at the realism of all of that timing. But just to give you some assurance that there was already some early work that was coming forward, Tim.
I'm very encouraged by that and very grateful for the offer. Thank you. My final question is, in recognition that there's been a lot of pressure to produce the accounts on this accelerated timetable, okay. What are the key person dependencies that were identified during the preparation process? And what are the lessons of this going forward in the future?
So I think we have to recognise that we probably got quite a small team working on the performance arrangements and the data necessary for reporting on that. We do work with Stats Jersey, obviously, which uses its offices to provide us with quite a lot of information. But what we've tried to create is a deputy for any of the data cell work that we need to undertake to be identified so that if somebody was not available for contact or we weren't collecting the information appropriately, we had a mechanism for maintaining that. We, we will, I think, post the COVID period, we probably want to have a look at some of the lessons that we've learnt from the COVID work and our performance arrangements before that, because the team was quite small. And the potential for some weaknesses in the sort of point of, single point of failure, we've identified that we need to probably just deal with a bit more than we have potentially thought about. The other bit, though, that will help is the automation of the process will, I think, therefore be less people reliant on the performance system and more about the quality of the data that's going into the system. And that, I think, is going to be an area where we will therefore be able to de-risk it around people dependencies and more about using the technology platforms that we are going out to recruit, sorry, to develop over this year. So there's quite a lot there around finance, there's quite a lot there around people data, there's quite a lot there about some of the things that were raised earlier in the questioning about debt, et cetera, from a fiscal point of view. And we've got a performance system that is also being built at the moment, which will improve the quality and way in which we can highlight our reporting, which hopefully will give us more resilience and be less people dependent. But it is always going to be subject to what you put in the front end of the sausage machine so that you just don't get rubbish coming out the back end, as we have previously discussed.
But the other aspect, have it been a year-end process with a much tighter reporting timeline? Has been the use of rigorous project and programme management throughout, regular meetings to identify where we were behind where we said we'd need to be and mitigating actions put in and making sure we chase down people for that data. So I should expect for, just for the finances, we had the same sort of governance process around performance data as well.
Thank you very much indeed for a very comprehensive answer. I am encouraged that you do have a number of lessons learned. Out of any process, there's always the opportunity to improve it. And I wholly agree with you that it will be very important to look at that information before you seek to automate. You really want to be confident that the process is right before you automate it. And we certainly look forward to hearing more from your lessons and how you intend to implement them in new systems and processes in the future. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. And thank you for that, Tim. I couldn't have said it better myself. Yeah, just a couple of things. Obviously, there will be questions arising from this hearing. So if we can send them on to you. And also if we could have the minutes of the advisory cell discussing the Nightingale construction of the Nightingale Hospital, please. But apart from that, thank you very much indeed. And we haven't run over too much, I don't think. Thank you very much. And we look forward to the next quarterly hearing. Thank you.
Chairman, just before you go, so that we can be clear, the stack, as I referenced it, what is involved in the wider advice around health needs? In terms of the decisions on the Nightingale Hospital, those were decisions made through the competent authorities meetings, the emergency council, and ultimately at some point through the health minister. We can provide that information for you separately, but it won't come from the stack meetings. They were not part of the approach and decision making for the hospital. That came from all the assessments of the emergency planning for beds, for numbers and the outcome that would have been seen had we not flattened the curve. But I can certainly provide the relevant information for you from the relevant committee meetings that were determining the decisions on the Nightingale Hospital. Just so that we're clear, because the stack is a slightly different body.
What is the stack? As you described it?
It's the scientific, technical advisory cell. So what it is, is it's made up of a range of personnel that I informed you about earlier on. And it does provide advice to ministers and to the emergency council. However, the stack is more about the technical work around medical proficiency. Its role is less about the emergency planning function required. So by way of example, number of beds that you need to be able to deal with a pandemic, the way in which you make decisions about secondary care facilities for people who may or may not need ICU treatment is not something that is determined by the stack. That's determined through the health silver and gold control arrangements and obviously through the emergency council. So
Just let me get this right. The Nightingale Hospital is going to be a dilution of the staff at the General Hospital with a few extra people thrown in. So who exactly was advising on that?
No, the Nightingale Hospital is not a dilution of the main facility at the General Hospital. It does though, you're quite right, have to be supported by the General Hospital. The decision that was taken involving the move to get the resilience in the number of beds was influenced and took account of medical advice through consultants in ICU. But that is not the same as the role of the stack. So in deciding how and what facilities we needed, and there were a range, and there are a range of options that were agreed, those decisions were taken through the emergencies council and the competent authorities ministerial decisions on the advice of both the senior management in HCS, consultants, those people who are involved in some of the modelling, as well as logistics experts and also involving people like the ambulance service, for example. So there was a range of personnel who were involved, but it wasn't through the stack is what I'm trying to be clear. And I'm very happy to provide you with the minutes of the various decision-making bodies that came to the decision to commission the Nightingale Hospital. But all I'm saying to you, Chairman, is that it wouldn't be through the stack because that was not the decision-making body.
Super. Well, that will be very helpful. Thank you very much indeed.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that particular point.
Right, yes. Super. Thank you all very much indeed. And have a good evening.
Thank you. Bye bye now.